Let's start with the first. Very excited everyone being here. Time to lengthen our work session, but we did cover a lot. As always, before we begin. Brother Rock and Golf, Ellison, and Play and Play. Everyone stand and play.
I can remember our good friend out here tonight that always is Evan Stone, his stepdad, has passed away. His uh, Larry Morris will be his funeral tomorrow.
So keep uh, keep Ellison family in your prayers, that's his name, Evan Stone, please.
Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you, Lord, that we come together tonight and all the business that we've already done. We thank you, Lord, for where we live and what you have provided for us. And we just pray that you would continue to bless not only here, but bless our nation, bless our world. Father, we pray for tonight, we pray for your guidance and the things that have come before us and the things that will, and we'll be able to do the very best we can for the citizens of Dade County. Father, we pray that you would be with Evan and his family and the loss of his dad and stepdad, and we pray, Lord, that you would be tonight with our men and women in uniform, whether that's on foreign soil or here in our own country or on our highways and streets tonight, those that are watching out for us. Lord, just bless them, bring them home to their families. Again, Lord, let this meeting be a blessing to you, and we give you the praise we're asking in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular scheduled meeting of Dade County Board of the Michigan State takes place at the same time, first Thursday, if everyone had offered notice, the legal meeting was given to our legal orgs in uh, Dade County Central. Junior Pro Call. Nick Comett?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Goff?
Here.
Bradford?
Here.
Nick Comett, you want to give your committee report?
At tonight on the report on the 911 center for the uh, is 198 DMS calls, 215 fire rescue, 94th Street, 23 Public Works, 2,417 law enforcement calls, or 2,866 dispatch calls in the month of January. That's everything else, seems to be doing pretty good and relatively quiet in the last month.
Okay, thank you, Mia. Scotty Pittman?
I was Stacy. Middle school baseball will be beginning practice on February 12th. You've been working hard to get to middle school field in good shape, put uh, 350 tons of dirt and vision there.
And business.
Trying to smooth it down, getting regulation. That's a lot of work, putting out 350 tons of dirt, so they've really been averaging, he said he's still got a little cosmetic stuff to work on, but it's in better shape than probably had it been several years. Also, one thing, help the Davis community. Yesterday, we broke ground, we'll start on November Walker track. It's located in the bowl, what we call the bowl, by Davis School. It's not going to be done next week, it's going to be done as, as we get the time and weather permits, but it'll be a quarter mile track around the bowl. Had the school board representative, his heart line out yesterday, and we talked about maybe getting George Power to come in, put up a few more light fixtures, there's only one light right now. We don't know how bright it is, I haven't been out there tonight, so could possibly get some more lights, maybe, we still have, I don't know if everybody here remembers it, but it's been what, ten, twelve years ago when we done the fundraisers at it?
It's been the least way.
When we first started talking about putting this walking track in the community center in, we had some male beauty pageants, you know, but they, they were entertaining to say the least, but we raised, it's around $7,000 that we're going to make. Well, I've got to get with the community center board, which they, we have had meetings in years, it's kind of just disbanded, but the money's still there. So we could put up some uh, maybe some benches or some uh, fencing or something like that effect, the landscape and something beautiful, either walk around the bowl. There's stuff going on, it's just uh, kind of slow, like everything here.
All right, just a little quick report on our splash that we talk about, and of course, a little on the state splash as well. The loss was up about $10,000 over last month, it's still not, it's still down from last January's numbers. Splash was up $12,000, but again, was down about that much from the same time last year. So it is up from last month, but it's not up from last year on the same days. We talked about that, and there's no, no way we can put a dollar, we talked about the T-Splash and putting it back on the referendum. We did find out in our searching that fuel would not be on it, so that would make that particular splash less than the one we're talking about here, which we talked about in the meeting a while ago, we just don't know exactly how much, but uh, is, you know, as you hear about these things and just know, and our legislation, as we report all the time, and Tom Mounds, now he was here, and he told me how many bills had done running through there. It's like they're killing trees left and right, I'm sure, down there, and a lot of them we really never hear about, but uh, they will be churning them out, they've been in session now almost three weeks, and they go to, I think Steve Tarvin said that the last day would be March the 29th, maybe, for the last day of session this time. And so they want to get out, because it is an election year, and by law, they can't, they can't earn any, they can't pay any money for their campaigns while they're in there. But, the bottom line is, it comes back to what we talk about all the time, the unfunded mandates, and one that we're hoping, and we talked about Jane Moreland's office and the fact that they can change the computer system, we may have some things that will go along with it, but the fact is, we don't have a choice when those things come down the pipe, and we hope that the state will look and say, we're going to help them with that expense, because it is very expensive, and they've done that on the GATTs or whatever system they're on. So if you see or if you're, you're representing John Depp involved, or State Senator Jeff Mullis, just ask them about those kind of things, the mandates that are being handed down, because I know the state, and I'll put this out, we talked about it, I was in a meeting the other night, well, it's Tom and I don't think anybody else in here right now was there, but it was Mike Wiggins who was running for governor, he's one of the six candidates. Oh, this guy was there? Well, you're easy to forget. And uh, he's running for governor, one of the six candidates, and uh, I brought up the fact again about, you know, why we can't find out how much money we send to Atlanta, so we know how much money are we getting back? And uh, Tom and I will verify this, you know what his answer was? They're outdated systems, they don't know, and I'm thinking, we sent them a awful lot of money from them, they're not know where it's coming from, that was his answer to that question, basically, is their system is so outdated that they, so I'm glad my wife's a better bookkeeper, but anyway, I will ask just one thing for myself, if you're, if you keep me in your prayers, I'll be having shoulder surgery next, a week ago, a week from today, scheduled to have it, so I'll be out and around, but I won't be able, I'll be like Ted was when he had his surgery, won't be able to drive for a while, so, but I will be around, if you need me, I'll still be around and do anything I can. So keep me in your prayers, if you would. Thank you.
Adam Bradford?
Well, I've had a pretty quiet month, because I knew that flu. I went to stay with my daughter about a month, that lasted about a week, we came home. But anyway, we've had a few things going on, and I like to thank Bill and his crew, we only have like seven people on our crew, but he keeps up all our county roads, pretty good, if we can call him one day and he's there the next, the day after, takes a bit of care of our county roads. And I'm probably, I've had a couple of calls, I looked at Mountain on 189, which is a state road, and there's a couple of holes right there at mile marker two, and so I'm meeting with G-Dot next week to see if we can get them there. If you hit them, it's pretty dangerous right there, it's on the edge of the road, it could pull you off the highway, so they agreed to meet with me next week on that situation. And we had a meeting the other night with American Legion, they wanted me to thank everybody for all the donations they've helped us with this past year, we own $168,000, it's the first year, we're down to about $28,000 now, so that's a great thing. Plus, all of our rifles are paid for, we have an honor guard, we have two honor guard systems now, and this funeral tomorrow with Bill is, will be a 129 funeral we've performed since we started doing that. I don't know if you realize this, not that it's a full day, so I've got 129 days at funeral, as. But uh, I want to thank everybody for what they have done. And I met a lady the other day, and she'd been over here at our transfer station, and she says it's the cleanest transfer station she'd ever been to, one of the best kept, best kept up places she'd been to. And this must have been done 462 times, that's for Robert, make sure she gets all that straight. But she was very proud of what we'd done over here, and I want to include the guys cleaned it up, we have the trustees that get out there and get out their car, when it's raining or whatever, your truck, they empty it for you, and that's a great thing, I believe in using as much as we can. That's about all I have. Oh, and I want to tell Scotty about that pageant, I did win an award that night at that pageant. What the hell did you win? I won the craziest. You were all pretty crazy.
I didn't dress that.
No, you just, you were the.
I kept it cold. I just couldn't get a dress on, I was saying.
There's videos floating around somewhere, I'll tell my wife, I'm going to throw a burn it.
That all we got?
That's it, yeah.
It's been a, it don't seem like it ought to be too bad lately, I mean, this month's been nice and fast, it's amazing, of course, we had a little snow, a little winter, you know, weather that we weren't used to, and that kind of, I guess, made things a little respeited, but uh, we've got, every, every, every month, the last couple months, I've mentioned this broadband, rural broadband, and it's really, it's coming to a, I don't know what wrong with state government, but it's really coming, it's coming a really important subject, not just in Dade County, but all over Northwest Georgia. And um, we got. No, if I get on, I'll get it fixed. Uh, we've got, we've got several people, another, I mean, like one or two people here in the county, that, they're doctors, some attorneys. All this hot air, guests coming out, it's political, you know, but uh, but there's a lot, a lot going on, you know, that, I went to our Thursday meeting, the Regional Commission meeting, and we had a meeting after that, which wasn't having one in a couple of months, because of holidays and all, and we've got another one coming up on the 15th. And um, the, the government, you know, the federal and the state government is really pushing this, and the Department of Education, because there is so many areas in our, not just in our county, but all over Northwest Georgia, that, you know, you're talking about unfunded mandates, when you mandate a child, you know, with a iPad and take away the books, and you know, that, that child's got to get his, got to do his homework, and you're telling them, get, well, when they don't have access to your internet or your fiber, and they can't do it, then we got a problem. And, and at first, when they first dropped this to our attention back months and months ago, I thought, well, that can't be that big a problem, because you know, you think it's just normal now that you have wireless service or, or, but that's not true. And uh, Pauling County right now is a, is an example, they're using, in Pauling County with a, they brought in this newest technology, and they're covering, they're hitting about 95% of their county right now, and uh, and I'm not up on as far as speed goes, but it's a maximum, a massive amount of speed that 95% of that county now is receiving through a wireless transmitting. And so it's coming, and um, you know, I know Rod Rogers here with the phone company, where she was, and you know, I don't know really how y'all are, you know, are looking at it or whatever, but you know, they're pretty much saying, you know, that, you know, the local providers, you know, they need to step up and, and, and reach out, and I know, I know it's money, you know, it's likely, but uh, you know, in a lot of the areas, you know, they're saying, you know, if you can't do it, and they'll give a drop dead date, you know, you do it, or they're going to come in, you know, and your governments will be like water authorities, I mean, they'll have, you know, you'll actually run it like a water authority or a power company, you know, because it's sexier. And like this week, the week I mentioned, you know, I've had, I've had four calls, well, actually five calls, but four calls from people in the county that, that really are just, you know, they, they, they want to actually do their work. And uh, one, one lady's a doctor at Memorial Hospital, and, and she cannot, you know, work, you know, that doesn't do the work she needs to, when she gets home at night, the point, the nighttime of going back to work in Dade County, so she's having to go other places where she's got a hot service to do. Another doctor called me, you know, I don't even think about these things, I don't, you know, we're satisfied, I go to work, and we've got, we have good service here, I've got a charter there to house, you know, but these people don't have access to it, so it don't sound like a big deal, but it's, it's beginning to be, people ever thought 20 years ago that something called internet would be a part of our lives like this, but it is, it's like cell phones. But anyway, I'm, I am on that board, on rural broadband, Northwest Georgia rural broadband board, and uh, and I'll update you as, as we, if we see changes coming, but to, I'm just teasing, there's changes coming down the road, and it's, it's, it's happening. Alex has been involved, you know, real, real heavily in it, and so there's some, there's some big things happening when they're fixing the, 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 another thing, been involved in in the last, well, since December really, is uh, is transportation, and what I mean to that is, is truck, truck traffic, and that's something that a lot of people don't, don't think a lot about, but you know, we're fixing, I'm going to a meeting in the morning at 10 o'clock in Chattanooga, and it's pertaining to not just transportation and traffic, but truck traffic. And uh, in the next, in the months to come, between now and midsummer, the inland port will be open in, in Owen Chatsworth, and you think that, you know, you say, well, that probably won't affect us at all, well, it will. If you see the traffic, truck traffic now, it's on 136, there, there, many of the carriers over there, carpet carriers, and I understand that even the port authority now getting involved, and they're directing their trucks now across country on 136 on Lookout Mountain, and uh, and the truck traffic is, we increased probably three times what it was two years ago, and when that, when that happens over there, and they turn all trucks going to Nashville, to the Birmingham area, or going west, you know, they're going, they're going to be looking for the shortest route to hit 24 and 59 going into Mississippi and cutting across to Texas or whatever, and uh, and what these meetings have been about is actually warning, you know, warning us and G-Dot, that hey, you're not prepared for this, you know, and so what that means is, is, it's a way for us anyway, is the east-west corridor has been talked about for 25 years, I guess, but uh, you know, it's, it's going to happen, I mean, they're, you know, they're going to have to do that, and it will intersect Dade County, intercept Dade County I-15 now, somewhere in Dade County, and uh, we're not sure where yet, I know in the near future, we're going, we've got a meeting, you know, like I said, last month, we've got a meeting coming up with G-Dot, and not just for that, but it'll be a lot of projects discussed, and then it'll be discussed tomorrow at this meeting, because it's not only us involved with it, it's Tennessee, because that, that'll pull that traffic, the what trucks go through Chattanooga, to pull it away from Chattanooga and out of the city. So I'll keep you updated on that, but it's, it's something, it kind of's in the back of your mind, you don't even think about, it's something, you know, you don't wake up one morning and, and traffic's already bad enough in the morning, and evenings you're in. So I'll keep you up on that. Also, let's see here, Scotty mentioned the walking track, that's something we've met with the, our school superintendent, I met with her twice, actually three times, to get this actually pinned down, how they want it, and because this has been talked about about, I guess, 10 years, several 10 years, every time we'd get close to it, we would change superintendents, and they just wouldn't, they just didn't really work, was, I mean, it just wouldn't work out, and I don't know why, because it benefits the children, it's going to be a nice place, and also it benefits the people, that, you know, the community that wants to walk there. And uh, and Davis, that, that walking track is the last one, you know, in the county, there will be a walking track every end of the county, even west ground, you say, so that, that will kind of put, you know, a track in everywhere, I mean, if you want to walk it.
Do I?
Yeah, but I'm talking about on the mountain. And uh, so, you know, and, and when we start with, when we start our construction on our storm shelters, at the end of the, you know, when we finish that project, which, you know, it's just going to be, not going to be like weeks and months, but just when we finish it, you know, there shouldn't be a person or a community in the county that won't have, you know, access to it, you might have to drive a mile to it, but you don't know where to go, if you live in Mobile, or you live in the structure, or don't have a basement, at least you don't know where to go, and that's your choice, if you want to stay home. So, and, and they'll, they'll be located, you know, in our communities, they'll have to be on government property, so they'll be close to your community activities, you know, with your community center or whatever for that. So, anyway, the, yesterday, I met with, I went with Peter, this fellow that owns this property in North of here, where the Davil Brown Farm, that we, we know what is Davil Brown Farm, it's Leonard Nixon, we wanted to go and get an update on what was going on, because of the, the development or the industry that's coming there, they're dealing directly with him. So, he did give us, you know, he's been in the hospital, been really, really bad, but he's, he's doing better, and uh, you know, as far as we know, that deal's still, is still going, is still in, you know, in the works, now there, there are other places that they're looking at, but it's still possible that it could come to Dade County, so we'll keep you up on that, and uh, as we've told you before, that's a pretty good sized operation, that he will be starting, the job will be starting in it to high teens, just less than $20 an hour, you know, hiring straight in, so it could be a, a pretty big boost, you know, for, for the working people in the county. We had a meeting with the sheriff, Tommy Bradford, the sheriff, we've got the three state, three mountain.
They're the ones that did come.
Yeah, they've, they've actually done away with that, it's not, they're no longer, what I, what we were told at the meeting, that, that's, that's no longer, no such thing, but we've got another bike group here that is wanting to actually have an event in the county, it's only about 200 bikes, the sheriff met with them, or Tommy, and explained the, you know, the dos and don'ts, and also, that event's going to happen in October, it's nothing like the, the Burke Offspring event, because they, they're not going to even be close to Burke Offspring, they're going to stay on state routes, and maybe touch one county road, but we'll keep you up on that also. Let's see here. Got one, one last thing, and this is something you'll probably read about, but we got, the APD's been in the county here hawking on all mine in January and part of December, from their solid waste people to the scrap tire people, scrap tire people was here yesterday, we've got a pretty major problem that they found, it was reported on Sand Mountain, and their enforcement people was here yesterday, went out with the empties and talked to these, because there's several thousand tires involved in this, and uh, so, of course, they're in charge of that, they're in charge of actually what, reading the rules to the people, because there is a law in Georgia, for years it was 99 tires you could have on your, your premises legally, and I found that this morning, from one of the enforcement people that called me back, that's no longer, it's 25 tires legally that you can have, like for flower beds or whatever, you know, on your property, but they have, they have to be drained, where they don't hold water or contain water or fill with dirt, where you, you won't have mosquitoes in the summer. And uh, there again, that may not sound like a big deal, but a few years ago, if you lived here, it's a big deal, when, when the epidemic was going around, mosquitoes and all, we actually were doing mosquito control, and it was really scary time, but uh, but uh, on the other issue, we've got some pretty severe issues in the county with, with people dumping their garbage, I mean, just household garbage in, entering our homes, and uh, they're, that's fixing to be addressed, I'm not talking about three or four bags of garbage, there's one instant on Lookout Mountain, there's, there's a lot of garbage, I mean, and so the state, the environmental people, like I said, have been here, and we're handling it, going to handle it. If you have anything else to add? If not, we move on.
The appearance that we should have a case, Mayor C.D. Trent, he has the court.
Good to thank you. Again, this February the 12th will be our next city council meeting at 6:00 P.M., Trent City Hall. Also, there's a few things happening throughout the city, February 10th, you've been seeing all this, the church class summit, church safety summit, Dade County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Cross and them had some, a meeting at our course facility a few months ago, and they're bringing that same thing to a summit. We're also going to be talking about weather safety, there's a lot of things they're doing throughout that to help all the churches, and that'll be at Trent United Methodist Church from 8:30 to 5:15. They're going to intro the church policy issues, codes and conducts, reporting protocols, stewardship of children training, will be a free lunch, winter weather preparedness that we will be doing, and then the last thing of the day from 1:40 to 3:15 is active shooter training. All this is spun off from the church that had the shootings, and, and you know, we, we worry about these things, and a lot of the churches, which we all know that's something in our concern, we hate to think about that, but there is issues with that. Also, Ted mentioned February 16th Arbor Day, Miss Elwes' guest is not, I think she's going to let us know when that's going, where it's going to happen and what we're going to do, she mentioned it to us last month. Also, the commission touched on T-Splosh, and we have had our meetings, and one of the things that we're really looking for in the city is the sidewalks, 136 East to the high school, and hopefully further on, 136 West from South Main Street all the way up, at least to McCab Road and Pace Drive, where all their eating establishments are. We have some major streets that need to be ground up, not repaid, we need to ground them down, because we're getting like years and years and years and years of surface on them, and one of the main ones is right out here, one of our busiest streets between this building and the course facility is West Crabtree Street. If you've been through here, when it rains, it's holding water really bad, and it's busting up, and it's messing up our sidewalk, and we've just got a lot of areas in concern that we have found in our, in my last two and a half years here, that I think it'll be a good thing that, you know, we've been using our splash funds to do that, and paving is very, very expensive. A lot of projects that we tried to co-grant with the county when they're doing that, to help be the best stewards of that money. Speaking on another paving project that we're working on, we did apply for Appalachian Regional Commission grant to finish pavement bank or drive last year, it was a $150,000 grant, we got awarded that this past month, when it's all said and done, in the final federal workout, it's $128,840. And then the match is that is in kind, which will be the work of the city, work with the county, using the pavement equipment and all the in-kind match of our equipment, our man-hours, the price rate of our equipment based on the federal rate will be the match. Hopefully, we can have no cash flow coming out of either city or county, we're going to do our best. Me and Billy measured it again to make sure, because we've got to come up with a budget, I've also requested that for our L-Me for the 2018 budget, $33,304, that we're going to try to use that as well too, with some of the matching funds. Hopefully, when Aspall's ready, we'll be ready to work on that project. If you've been by the city park, you can still see Ronnie and Eddie working pretty hard, we finished up the dirt work all the way around the track, we put our new ADA accessibility through the whole sections of the park, they're actually putting the dirt back in, filling it in, and getting the trip passers finished. We did have a little bit of damage, we think it's possibly from the piece of hand rattling was damaged, we don't know how it happened, so we've asked folks if they see anybody damaging equipment, call 911, let us know as quick as possible. Also, you've noticed 136 East and West, McCab Road and 136 West, contractors finally got the dirt work finished on all the red lines. I've had numerous complaints on this, and we called numerous times, and I'm sure the weather had a lot to do with it, but hopefully that looks a lot better. Robert mentioned Bill Ellison, and I want to speak on him, Bill, I didn't realize he was a vet until I mentioned that, and I'm going to ask Chief Ross, how long, when do you think Bill started? Bill was a longtime EMT for Dade County.
He probably died only a year.
When the, when the O-Fire Hall and Rescue EMS station, it used to sit right there with a library, it was, Bill was one of the, one of those members, along with Rodney, and I guess what, Chief Kaiser, and a lot of those guys.
Rodney was in the ground, was he going out?
No. I think Rodney was one of our, some of the original EMTs that started, there's a bunch of them, there's still a lot of good folks.
Marty was.
Marty, yep, but Bill went to Dade EMS, and then when Hutchinson acquired it, he was a longtime partner of Sandra Gray, our police commissioner, she's a paramedic, and I rode in a bunch of hamsters with Bill and watched him do his, his thing, he was always a kind man, took care of, of the folks, but for his service for EMS, Northwest Georgia Region, one EMS council of 16 Northwest Georgia counties, we have an honor guard, they will be up here tomorrow to do an honor guard with him for, for that, I didn't realize he was a. I didn't realize he was a military vet. And then there will be a funeral procession from, uh, Mowers to Trenton Baptist. And we'll be having our Dave D M S truck in there along with other agencies are bringing trucks over as well. So, um, just Bill's a good, good, good asset that we're carrying for these several years. Uh, I'm gonna touch on the severe weather as well too, that, you know, mentioning the ordinance that, you know, take your time to, you know, storms are coming in. Take your time, either go to trentonga.gov, Dave County, that's ga.gov. We both got links to the severe weather warning system that's in Dave County for your, for to help you. If the weather systems come in, it will automatically text you, email you, call you. If we have an issue with boil water and others, or we have a missing person, we can use that to call out based on areas. So please try to do that. Also, readyga.gov, there's a ton of stuff on there for the severe weather league. There's kids to help you, uh, provide for you, your family, your children, your pets and your large animals as well, you know, to be prepared in case something happens. So as soon as we get done with winter weather, we're right back in spring storms and thunderstorms heading our way quickly, so. And that's about it. And I will touch on, uh, one thing Ted mentioned too about the trucks over one thirty-six east. Everyone that we've had that's either run off the road, wrecked, or had issues at the cut, and we sat there and talked to. Two of them, I personally have helped get up through the cut, uh, helping them put the truck in the right gear to get around the curve. They are told to come this way from Nashville or Burnham, the two that I had, was Burnham and Nashville. And they were trying to climb the mountain in a higher gear than it should have been in another gear. So myself and Matt Cole got the last one and nearly run over both our trucks trying to get up through the cut. We had to get in and move because he was fixing to clip the trucks. It's something that's growing here and it's gonna continue, I think, but that's all of it.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Morris, Shannon Sharpe?
There.
Dave Library.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number, but, um, we were talking about, um, a lot of the Wi-Fi, a lot of people don't have a Wi-Fi. We have seen a huge, huge increase in our Wi-Fi. Because, you know, they keep getting outside of the library and we, that's one of the things under statistics, we've seen a huge increase in. Um, and I was walking by the other day and, um, it was really early in the morning and Mom ran down the window and she said, sorry, we just need to, he didn't finish his work last night, we, we don't have internet, so, um, so yeah, they, they do use it a lot. And I was like, that's okay, that's why we did that. We made sure that it went outside the library because when we are closed, the children still have access to it, so.
And, and, you know, to touch on that, the reason, because a lot of people say, well, why, why did they need it? The thing about it is, these, these, uh, counties that have actually cut all their, their funding out for books, and there's many in Northwest Georgia.
They have.
Well, the issue that I've had, it is, it has got years curriculum, curriculum on it. And so to do their homework at night, they have to go on it.
They have to have.
Because it's tied into that company that sells the, the, whatever, you know, the system. And plus, you know, like if they, if they have questions, you know, like in algebra or whatever, you know, when they've got that, they can go in and connect.
We don't have that.
So that's my question, I thought, well, you know, Kim could do it with, you know, the old way, and they don't. And, and they're forced through the Department of Defense case to do that, so.
We're even seeing at, at the libraries that they're giving us less for books, more for technology. Because they, they are, um, a- also colleges, a lot of, we have a lot of students in this area that actually don't go to campus anymore. They, you'll come in there and that's why we have the study rooms and stuff, you'll come in there and they're doing college online all the time. And especially if they have a house full, they come there and do their college courses and stuff a lot. So you see a lot of that. Um, we do have the date for the Read to Lead, it's March the twenty-fourth. Uh, we already have all of our readers lined up and we have, um, a lot of booths that are coming, so, um, I'll have more of that. Uh, we had a, our computer class this time was completely full, we had people on the waiting list. We are doing one a month and we may have to switch it to two a month, uh, because we're seeing a huge increase in those numbers. And we, we'll be having one on the twenty-seventh, one at ten and one at six, but both of them are already halfway full. So, uh, if you need, um, to take one, just please call and sign up, we'll operate, we'll sign you up for it. We have a family movie night on the fifteenth. We are, um, have a parent cafe on the sixth. Uh, we do parent cafes, we used to do them every other month, but now we're doing them every quarter. And this quarter, the one we're doing is actually for the adults. It's a twenty-eight finance planning. We'll have, um, someone there for finances and, um, information on your home and insurance. And they, um, we did this last year and I'm pretty good at that stuff, that's kind of my job. And, uh, I found out things that I even could be doing better, uh, to, for budgets and stuff. So it, it's really interesting and it's free and it's at five-thirty and we will serve a meal. So, uh, we need you to call and register so we'll know how much food to have. And we partner with Dave Family First Connections and so it actually doesn't cost the library anything. Uh, we have other outsourced sources that pays for the bills and stuff for that. Uh, our next one will be in May and we'll do a mother, um, a mother's day event for, with the kids to parents. Do I have any questions or? We have some Valentine's things and we have a pretty full calendar, but you can go to our Facebook page, um, or on our website. Or pick a calendar up at the library, but we've got something going on pretty much every day this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert. Katie M., our representative from, uh, Chase and.
January was a busy month at the extension office because in addition to all of our normal in-class club meetings and activity club meetings, we also were preparing fifth and sixth graders for Club Relief District Project Achievement. And that competition will be this Saturday in Rome, so I'll have that report for y'all next time. B B and twenty-two teams have been practicing, the weather doesn't affect them as much, especially B B because they practice in the arena. Our shotgun team, they're gonna hold off until March to start because they obviously have to be outside. Tree City met, uh, the regular meeting second Monday of the month at our Ag Center, but the beekeepers and cattleman's that had to cancel their, their meeting for inclement weather. Upcoming, we have a four-H, it'll be the Dave and Walker Cattle Show. And just for y'all's information, this will be Brett's live, Brett Dyer's live show in the Ag Center because it'll be graduating. So y'all are welcome to come watch. And I am hosting a home orchard class at the extension office on February thirteenth, so we'll start inside. And then we'll head outside to do some hands-on pruning. January for me personally, they try to pack all of our trainings into what they consider off months. So we all met at Rock Eagle for three days for the Extension Winter Conference. I was in Lexington, Kentucky for three days for the American Grasslands and Forage Council Conference. I also attended the Tri-State Cattleman's Board of Directors Planning Meeting and the Coosa River Soil and Water Conservation District Meeting. Any questions?
Pretty busy for January.
What'd you do after lunch?
Yes. I, I came, I came here to use the internet.
There you go.
For some reason, our internet decided to do very strange things today and of course you always have to report to you when your internet's not working.
I actually, Brett, leave?
I do too, and I actually, and I, I forgot, I failed to put this in here. Every year in February, there is a student spotlight winner. And this is over the whole state, livestock showed, Brett won the all-around student spotlight this time. Try to get him in here maybe next month and if y'all want to recognize him for that, because that is a very high honor.
All right, get him a report, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Ms. Cheryl Paner, Dave County Chamber of Commerce.
All right, the first thing I want to touch on is I was contacted again by American Pickers. They've gotten some calls from Dave County as far as people that has stuff that, that they might be interested in looking at. I need to keep calling if you haven't, if, if you think you didn't got nothing they will look at. That's the stuff they will look at, so give them a call. I've got the number, I'll tell you now, the number is eight-five-five-old-rust, it's really easy to remember, but they've, you know, they've been checking in with us to make sure we're, and I've had a lot of, I talked to your mom for about an hour the other day. She called and talked to me, so. There's a lot of stuff out there, people just gotta call and talk about it. So, um, the big thing right now coming up is the, um, the, uh, Chamber Banquet, the award making March seventeenth. We got our theme, it's A Night in the Movies. Uh, we're giving awards away for the best dressed actor, actress and movie couple. So we're encouraging everybody to dress up. It was really fun last year, it was a Western theme. Ted was our roast day last year, this year it's John Bradford. So.
This year's John Bradford?
John Bradford. Yeah, so we're encouraging everybody to come out. Of course, it's a catered dinner, it's twins, it's a ticket. Um, all of our nominees we've got out there, it'll be, they'll be put in the paper, but we've got, um, several, several this year. So it's, it's gonna be a good dinner again. Um, begin like March seventeenth, six o'clock, six, and we encourage everybody to come out and support everybody. There's a lot of good nominees this year, they'll be in the paper, they're on the Facebook, they'll be on our website. If you've got a Chamber Gram, they're in the Chamber Gram, so that's what we're working on right now, memberships. Memberships are way up compared to last year. We've compared this year to last year, we're up probably close to four thousand dollars, so we're getting a lot of interest.
That's good. Any questions?
No.
Thank you, Cheryl. Throw down the number four.
All right. January thirty-first, what am I thinking, it's real hot. Hold it out here. I have the same problem y'all have. Okay, January thirty-first. Two thousand and eighteen. Much better. You keep the turnip, my turn way down, so, uh, okay. January thirty-first, the, uh, general fund, uh, a balance of one million, seven hundred thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. We now have, uh, six one hundred thousand dollars certificate deposits, so we'll have six hundred thousand. That brings the general fund balance to two million, three hundred thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. Federal Asset Fund, U S Treasury is a balance of zero, the Share Special Fund, a balance of sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-one. Drug Use Education Fund, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Victim Assistance Fund, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Jail Fund, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Federal Asset Fund Department of Justice, zero. Employees Flexible Spending Account, twenty-two thousand, thirty-seven dollars, twenty-two thousand and thirty-seven dollars, yes. Payroll Account, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. In Splotch, our project account currently has a balance of forty-seven thousand, seventeen dollars. And the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, General Obligation Sales Tax Debt Service Account has a balance of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. The I D A County Construction Series B Bond Accounts has a balance of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. You can see the, the six certificate deposit there listed at the bottom. Interest, just so you know, of those, they are beginning to renew and, uh, so we have one as low as point four zero. And I'm hoping we can renegotiate that. We just purchased one this past week for, with an interest rate of one point nine percent, so that's a great improvement of a point four zero. Uh, the next report you see there is for the, uh, income statement as of December thirty-first. And, uh, for the departments, we, for the month of December, we spent two million, seven hundred, I'm sorry, let's bring that in. Revenues, uh, we brought in two million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Budget was two million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-six. So that was short by twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars. Now, that's a big revenue month, you gotta realize, December thirty-first, that's when all the property tax came in, so that's why. It's not typical, but that is, uh, that's what happens in December in county government. Year-to-date, uh, for the first six months, we've brought in six million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Budgeted was six million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars, so again, we were under budget by a hundred and eighteen thousand, four dollars. Expenses for the month, uh, we've spent seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Budget is seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine thirty-five, so we were under budget twenty-nine thousand, thirty-nine dollars. Year-to-date, we have spent four million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, forty-seven dollars. Budgeted five million, eighty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, so we again, we're under budget one hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Budget obtained so far should be right at fifty percent. Revenues attained so far was sixty-eight point eight-nine percent. Expenses attained, fifty point two six percent. Next report, uh, is the same information, the general, that's the general fund balance sheet by department. They did a format and then you see, uh, from there, the, the project variance report. And that is, again, the same information broken out differently through the general ledger numbers for the county. And then following that, we have Splotch. And, um, as Commissioner Goff was giving a report, it dawned on me, we did have a s, an error, um, when the state so graciously kept our money until the thirtieth of January. So I had to double mine in order to get this, prepare this and I picked up the wrong amount, we caught that today. So actually, it's up just a few cents or a hundred dollars or something, so. The local option sales tax for this, for January was one hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. And Splotch was one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. And I will correct that on your copy for the next month. And there's some reports there that just write us out the information that we, uh, talked about for Splotch. Following that is, uh, information about, um, Splotch detail for the month of December. And you can find that attached. Following that, just a re, quick report on, uh, excise tax on energy. We don't talk a lot about that, but six months in, we have collected twelve thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. Yep, and actually that helps to pay our Director of Economic Development salary, so that's, that's where that goes. Following the, following the report is from the Tax Commissioner. And, uh, this was through December thirty-first, again, July first through December thirty-first. She was collected at three million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is right at eighty point two eight percent for the year. Close the report.
Any questions for Donald? Rations? Hey, Donald, I can't most of the, pretty of our financial statements, is it?
Thank the motion, we accepted area.
Have a sec. Albo, Smith?
Yes.
Bevan?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Rabbit?
Yes.
Robert, you got any?
I don't.
You think any legal matters in the whole town, I'm ready for.
Reading of the minutes over last month's regular meeting and any special call meeting, when I'll be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies. Managed public records are labeled for review in our commission meeting and our commission office. Man, sorry, including the consent agenda. This time, I'll ask Mr. Townsend to go over the consent agenda. We will entertain most of that.
We have the approval of the agenda as amended, adding five D, which was the technology upgrades proposed by Mr. Alex Case. And then also we added agenda item number fourteen, which is Resolution R dash zero six dash eighteen. Uh, also we have approval of the previous meeting minutes, the review of the personnel status report. And then under board appointments, we have Resolution R dash zero nine, actually eighteen, appoint Mr. Jeff Forster to the unexpired time big. appoint Mr. Jeff Forster to the unexpired term beginning, and as to the Board of Tax Assessors, beginning February first, two thousand eighteen, expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand eighteen. Proclamation for severe weather preparedness week, and that is for the week of February fifth or the ninth, also statewide tornado drills and et cetera. You see, that's happening, I believe, next week. American Heart Association Month, and the Red Friday, which is tomorrow, everyone's asked to wear red in our Heart Association Month. Arbor Day in Georgia is the third Friday of February. Dade County proudly supports that, February sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, there'll be some ceremony to be announced. Proclamation for Optimist Day, first Thursday of February each year. This is, again, appreciated, and sponsored through their local Sheringdale Optimist Club. Also, under SPOST, we have the approval, basically approval of the request for proposal for two two thousand eighteen vehicles, as described, and those would be the Ford Explorers, discussed, I guess, approved. Here, an estimated value of the first was forty-seven thousand, four oh five, and the second was at forty-nine thousand, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. And we will be bringing this back to the Board of Commissioners for final approval at the March first meeting, but that is tentatively approved. Then also have the approval of new computers, technology upgrades through the county and the city with Tyler Technologies, and that was for a total expense to the county of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred five dollars and thirteen cents. Also, to purchase five, I believe it was, G E T A C computers for the sheriff's deputy vehicles, for sixteen thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents, along with the power docks and all of that stuff. And then also, Networks Inc., this is for two computer workstations, a total of three thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars. And then also, the approval of four turnout gears for the new Salem Fire Department, an expense of eight thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and ninety-two cents. And under Resolution R dash ten dash eighteen, Resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Family Crisis Center of Walker County, Dade, two cities, two counties, for a one-year term for the Family Crisis Center. Resolution R dash eleven dash eighteen, Resolution on Strife and Application for Georgia Department of Transportation, local maintenance and improvement grant, for a total of nine hundred and two thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty, thirty-six cents. There is thirty percent match, and that would bring the total projected cost of paving these sixteen roads of one million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred sixty-eight Resolution R dash twelve dash eighteen, Resolution to approve the lease agreement between Dade County, Georgia and the Family Resource Agency for four acres of land to continue Head Start Program, and this is a five-year lease. This is no expense, really a dollar per year, per se, but a three-year lease with two optional one-year term extension. Also, Resolution zero six dash one eight, one more time, as noted, the new language inserted according to the state, and it's a resolution requesting the General Assembly to adopt local legislation for Dade County, Georgia to collect the hotel motel excise tax under OCGA four eight dash thirteen dash fifteen one B, specifying the tax rate and allocation proceeds derived from the accommodations tax providing effective date of this resolution and for other such purposes. I believe that's it.
Any questions?
Nope.
Not overturning motion, then, hand over consent agenda, have the motion.
Take the motion.
To approve?
No.
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
Have a second.
Second.
Call of, Smith?
Yes.
Fittman?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Rafferty?
Yes.
Sheriff, please, thank you for your mention. Okay, you want to come up and talk to us tonight, come on up, right here, front of me. Right down the street, then, jumped up.
I thought I was going to be in appearance, but I appeared not being in appearance.
You thought you were gonna be watching.
I'm representing your committee. The forecast committee.
Oh, boy.
I'm going to read it, because I use all up, they're vibing the studs. In fact, there's some changes that have been made since, six is printed this afternoon, well, since it was printed a few minutes ago. Historic Dade County Courthouse renovation courthouse progress report. In two thousand one, a firm was hired to assess the condition of the historic Dade County courthouse. They found the building is in remarkably good condition for a building built in nineteen twenty-six. The laundry list of repairs and upgrades is extensive, and at the end of the document, they estimated the total cost could be as much as one million, one hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars. That's eighteen years ago, seventeen years ago. Local citizens have affirmed in three separate SPOST tax elections that they are willing to go forth with improving and repurposing the building. A copy of this preservation document committed by the county and the county commission office. The current project was begun without the benefit of the Citizens Ad Hoc Committee in two thousand fifteen. The major project completed in that time was the installation of an elevator on the southeast corner of the building with handicap entrance. The installation follows almost verbatim the suggestions of the two thousand nine renovation plan. Until the elevator was installed and signed off on by the fire marshal, no work of any kind can be afforded. The fire marshal finally, that's not in there, but finally, signed off the handicap access to the building in late two thousand sixteen. In March two thousand sixteen, the county commission appointed a citizens committee to plan, advise, and fundraise. Members of the committee represent each area of the county, and they are Donna Street, Ted Rumley, Sarah Moore, Audrey Clark, Rex Fleming, with Dawn Townsend serving as Secretary and General with the post. Committee meets once a month at two P M. in the county commission room. Using the items listed in the renovation plan, a chart was created which included demolition, site work, foundation, interior construction, interior finishes, exterior, and electrical and plumbing. The chart includes fifty items, and as of December the thirty-first, seventeen items have been completed, with others still in progress. In July two thousand sixteen, a capital campaign fund to raise funds, capital campaign to raise funds was begun. The committee asked the county to guarantee three years of SPOST dollars, up to fifty thousand, or at least fifty thousand, and that was done. The first major project, after stopping the leak in the chimney, was the replacement of windows. The public made generous donations for most of those windows. Members of the plats will be replaced by the windows upon completion of the building. There are several windows which still can be purchased in memory of or in honor of someone. Window bids, which was accepted, was sixty-five thousand, for sixty-five thousand, five hundred ninety dollars. The window project was completed in the fall of two thousand seventeen. Donations by the public to the Historical Society, which has been paid to the county, are forty-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. There were nine hundred, nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, which was donated not from windows, but in general, from corporate nonprofit and personal gifts. The Dade County Historical Society, Gil Manufacturing, Matt Mayfield Insurance, and Topola Georgia Economic Development, Citizens Bank, and others made these substantial contributions. Five thousand from the Historical Society, three thousand from Gil Manufacturing. Several, I skipped that, Georgia Power removed the electric pole and bored under Highway eleven and placed new wiring under the highway. While installing conduit to city buildings, the city of Trenton placed conduit under the streets and Highway eleven, make electric, electrical plumbing and technological access to the courthouse underground. The remaining telephone pole on the square is in the works to be moved by the owner, Trenton Telephone Company, possibly as part of the Streetscape project. Several grants have been written in limited, with limited success. The focus has shifted from county government applying for grants to a five oh one three secret requesting grants. The Dade County Historical Society will fill that role after a current audit of our books is completed. The grant, a grant from the Department of Community Affairs by the county has been accepted and is pending. Expectation is high for grants from agencies later in this project. Now, demolition continues through the cooperation of the Dade County Sheriff's Department. Officer Buddy Waters, Secret Vice Trustees, who have gutted the building to subfloors and the studs. Officer Waters is away at training, but he sends an email, at seven o'clock, actually. Buddy Waters estimates, or has counted, two hundred dollars times five trustees, equaling one thousand hours by trustees, at fifteen dollars an hour, that would be an in-kind, an in-kind contribution of fifteen thousand dollars toward our project. Many hundreds of hours, obviously, have been completed by the trustees at no additional cost to the taxpayers. The Preservation Committee thanks Sheriff Ray Cross for making this project a priority for trustees and for allowing Officer Waters to manage this project. A request for proposal was posted by the county in July two thousand seventeen. For the total remaining work, only one bidder applied. Because there were not three bids, the committee decided to rethink our bidding process and rebid the project after a new plan was formulated. Total money spent from two thousand fifteen through seventeen are as follows. Two thousand fifteen, sixty-five thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Two thousand sixteen, eighty-three thousand, twenty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Two thousand seventeen, seventeen thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents, for a total of one hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Significant funding, both public and private, is still needed to complete the project. A second phase of fundraising for public, the public portion will begin by June. Many of the, many have questioned the purpose of the courthouse after the completion of the renovation. The key landmark, in fact, is the only landmark in our town anymore, except for Cloud and Canyon. The key landmark in Dade County will become a center of tourism, arts and entertainment, business and economic development upon completion. The Chamber of Commerce, along with the Regional Visitors Information Center, or RVIC, will relocate to the facility. Plans are that the Industrial Development Authority and possibly the Downtown Development Authority will also be housed there. The Dade County Historical Society will have an office and a possible gift shop in the courthouse. Other groups and small businesses might fit the footprint of the building appropriate for their needs. Upper story of the courthouse will be available for rental for weddings, family reunions, anniversaries, birthday celebrations. It is the hope that the community will enjoy plays, concerts, dances, and historical preservation presentations in the courtroom as groups arise to host such events. Let me see if I have another note from Dawn. Yes. Hotel motel tax is, is partial, partial amount of that money will be used to support RVIC and the operation of that building. Individual businesses interested in making a donation toward this effort then make checks payable to the Dade County Historical Society. All donations are tax deductible at least through this year. Mail donations to Russell Brown Treasurer, Dade County Historical Society, and that will be in the newspaper, and that may also be delivered to the county commission. The only thing I did put in here was the historic courthouse calendar, which we had talked about doing, and I did it, I'm calling it the little ready-made project, because I did it, I did it with the help of a prisoner, and Dawn Townsend. We made a thousand dollars on those calendars, and the expense was not much.
We still have some for sale.
Do we still have some in your office?
There's about, oh, twenty.
And we have about ten at the library, and that's all, because we ran out of paper, and we'll just stop that, but we'll do another one next year, and the Historical Society at our next meeting will, will vote to move that money over into this project, which will be another thousand dollars from the Historical Society to the courthouse project. Does anyone have a question? As I'll answer.
I have a comment, Dawn.
Yes, sir.
The recent bedroom tax renovation, it's hurting, gonna really hurt the three oh one...
Five oh one three six.
Five oh one C threes, and there's ways to get around it, you can do contributions on a three-year plan instead of a year plan, but I know a lot of the charitable organizations are gonna really be hurting the charitable contributions.
Can you coordinate with our committee and talk about what you've learned about from your work at the park, so that we can take advantage? We don't have to ride that bicycle again, we've learned from you. Anybody else?
And also get our CPA, people that do our county audit, and they can actually give us some advice there.
Give us some advice. You may have any questions?
Yeah, if you have any questions.
I know you've worked hard on this, and thank you.
Thank you. It's gonna be worth it.
It'll work, yeah.
It's a long way to go. I, I thought we'd be through by Christmas of two thousand seventeen, but I was wrong, and I'm gonna, probably, it's probably gonna be another year or two unless we can, unless somebody comes out of the sky and gives us a half a million dollars, but, you know, folks in Dade County don't generally have that kind of money, so, thank you for your support.
Anyone else? Come up top this.
The newspapers should all have copies of that for printing papers.
If not, we, Robert, I think you want one.
Yes, just for...
Executive session, just for, 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 for... I hear a motion, one executive session.
Make a motion, we do an executive session.
Have a second. Second.
It's for land, it is for land acquisition. Sure. Talk about land acquisition.
Mr. Men?
Yes.
Fittman?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Rafferty?
Yes.
Sheriff, please. We'll get this, this to men themselves.
Make a motion, we return from executive session.
Have a second.
Second.
Call of, Mr. Fittman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Rafferty?
Yes.
Sheriff, those chiefs, executive session, no vote taken, discussing real estate issues. No vote taken. Put out your motion.
adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Have a second.
Second.
Call of, Mr. Fittman?
Yes.
Fittman?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Rafferty?
Yes.
Sheriff, please.